All right. Good evening. It's 5:31. I'm going to call the budget workshop to order. I see all members of the Board of Selectmen here in present. So we have what looks like a very lengthy list today. Is Amy on? I don't see Amy yet. Let's, uh, let's give her a moment and then we'll see, we'll get started. All right. I think despite the lengthiness of our workshop agenda, I think tonight's actually going to run pretty smoothly. We have a lot of departments to get through, but there are a lot of them are relatively small or with no major changes. So with all members of the Board of Selectmen being here in present, I want to lead off with the assessor and the Board of Assessment Appeals, which is about halfway back in Tab 2 for those using your books at home. And then after that, we're going to go to planning, the tax collector, the town clerk, and then the registrars. That'll be our batting order for now. So Helen, do you want to give an overview on your department, what you do, what you want to do?
Basically, not much has changed since last year. I've had two things that increased. My books and periodicals have increased. We have to use specific pricing guides to do motor vehicle pricing. And NADA, the National Automobile Dealers Association, has changed the pricing for the towns. So we've had a substantial increase on what it's going to cost to get the information to them, but it is actuarially mandated. And the second increase was under some fees. I do have a new person in the office. He needs to be trained. And my goal is to sign him up for every class that we can possibly find for him to get him up to speed as quickly as possible.
On that, can you explain, on the training of your new employee, can you explain the, the process and the timeline typically required to get certification as an assessor?
Certification as an assessor is only available through the Certified Connecticut Municipal Assessors Committee classes. There are six classes. The minimum number of classes that have to be successfully completed is five. They are only offered usually once a year. So once in a while, we can come up with a class that can be substituted. Minimum amount of time to become certified is three years because you also need to have three years' experience in an assessor's office or a related field in order to become certified. So three years is the minimum. Five years to six years is really the maximum that we look at for certification.
Thank you. So as you folks, as you know, Helen has a number of years of experience under her belt. But we're thinking in terms of a potential succession plan here. And under state law, you need somebody who is a certified assessor to sign a grant list and submit it to OPM. That is a requirement. There is currently a dearth of certified assessors available. So this, this approach to making sure we're basically training our own succession plan makes a lot of sense and keeps us in compliance with state law. Any questions or comments for Helen on her department or her budget request? Going once? Going twice? Helen's going to be the toughest one tonight, too. So we're, we're in for an easy ride.
There you go.
Okay.
Okay, Board of Assessment Appeals.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, Board of Assessment Appeals. Increase that pretty dramatically. Next March will be the the meetings after the revaluation. We're in the middle of a revaluation, which is effective October 1st of this year. Those values will be coming in November of this year initially and be finalized in the grand list in January of next year, which I expect, where the market has been with real estate values, I expect quite an increase in the number of appeals that the board will have to hear next year.
And the, the revale happens once every 10 years with a paper revale happening once every five or once every 10 years with five years in between them. So this is a paper revale year, right? Not a physical revale?
This is right. This is a statistical analysis of the market. We do any building permits and adjustments to, uh, to the buildings are visited by the revaluation company with every building in town.
Questions or comments on the assessment process or the Board of Assessment Appeals, Al?
Yeah, I just was, you know, there was the article in JI about the vehicles, you know, assessment going way up. Do you anticipate there's going to be a lot of pushback on the appeals or appeals on that?
I wouldn't be surprised to see quite a few, which is why I've been trying to get the news out there so that people will be aware to expect an increase in their assessment on motor vehicle when they come out in July. But those appeared in September of this year.
Okay, yep.
You're talking about for the supplemental list, right?
Yes. No, no. For the, the regular grand list bills come out in July. And there is a special September meeting for appeals on motor vehicle.
See you then. So Al, just to, to put a little bit more color on your point about the increase in motor vehicle, that is something that has been seen. Last time Helen and I talked about it, the average amongst 70 towns that had reported their grand lists at that time to OPM, the average increase had been 25% in motor vehicles. And we came in at 22%. So we are, although it's a shocking number, we are right in line with where most other towns who've reported so far have shown.
No, no, and I, yeah, I agree that we're, uh, we're in line with, with other towns, but I also think there ought to be a law.
Oh, they're working on it. You don't really want to know what they're working on next.
There is, there is a couple of proposals, one of them by the governor to put a statewide mill rate on automobiles capped at 29 mills. Just so you know, that would equate to about a $600,000 loss for the town of East Windsor. Now, the legislature and the governor are going to keep us whole by fully funding a budget line that will offset the difference. This on the heels of them having immediately never funded the municipal revenue, revenue sharing that we were supposed to be getting. They have a terrible track record of over time adhering to gimmicks like this.
Yeah, I'm aware of that, too. And, you know, so it's, it's, you know, kind of a bad situation on both sides. Number one, it's a, I think, an unrealistic and transitory market adjustment, you know, for this, for people's, you know, let's just, you know, it's not about me, but let's just take my 2002 Tacoma, all right? For, if you're going to tell me that's worth 25% more this year than it was last year, I'm going to scratch my head, right? So we, you know, it, the formula doesn't work for that. And then to think that the legislature is actually going to follow through on fixing that correctly is also something I would be skeptical about.
Just, just as a little follow-up, I actually have a letter in my file that was written back in 1918, thereabouts, to the state legislator saying what an awful, unequitable tax, the motor vehicle tax is. And they're trying to figure that for sense. So.
Yeah, once you get addicted to a revenue stream, it's hard to get rid of it.
Well, it is an awfully unfair revenue stream because your 2002 Tacoma parked on Ry Street in East Windsor is not taxed the same as it is parked on Ry Street in South Windsor. But, but the, the notion, the notion that you have one of only a handful of sources available to municipalities effectively sidelined. And you have to just trust the legislature not to start raiding funds down the road without replacing it with a different revenue source. I mean, that's, that's crazy.
Yep.
600 grand. Thank you, Patty, for that number, by the way.
I'm done editorializing. Thank you.
Okay, I was wrong. The Board of Assessment Appeals will be the hardest one tonight. On to tax collector. Patty, you're muted.
Yep. I thought you were doing planning and development, but okay.
She's not on yet.
Okay. All right. So with my budget, my increase is pretty much in dues and fees. There was an increase in the conference, the National Tax Collectors and Treasurers Conference. And also the, for CCM, I'm trying to get my assistant, a Certified Connecticut Municipal Officer, so there's a, a membership there and get her through that program, through Connecticut Conference of Municipalities. So there's a membership for that as well. So those are the increases there pretty much. Everything else is pretty much status quo.
Yeah, your, your budget is very minimal.
Yeah.
The CCMO certification that Patty was talking about is a program that's run through CCM that helps train municipal officials and employees in how to basically be better public administrators. And there's a litany of courses that's offered from supervisory skills to collective bargaining to budgeting to brownfield remediation, historic preservation, and they have a whole, a pretty impressive portfolio actually of offerings. Patty completed her CCMO last year. I completed mine. We have at least four other municipal staff that are going through the process, which I think is a really cool indication that there are people who are trying to make sure that we're better at doing our, providing services to the, to the public. So I'm, I'm supportive of that and, and I hope that we're able to stay committed to getting Heidi into that program, too.
Makes a much well-rounded employee. It really does. So that's it for my, my budget.
Questions or comments on the tax collectors' budget? So we're going to talk about tax revenue, too, but we'll do that towards the end as part of the overall revenue picture. I think Amy sent around, or maybe Melissa sent around a revenue sheet later this, or earlier this afternoon. That's something we, I want to get through the, the boards and the department heads before we move on to that, but we can have that discussion, too.
Just had one quick question.
Yeah.
In their, in your goals and priorities, you talk about automating the budget process. Could you kind of give us a little detail around that?
Automating the budget process?
Sorry, I skipped over to pressure. I'll save that for Amy. You're, you're off the hook.
I'm like, I don't remember that. Okay, good enough.
So with that, we'll go on to the town clerk, Amy Lam.
Okay, you can hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, so, um, pretty much the same. There wasn't really much change to our budget. I went up $100 in professional services. That's because new vision for our land records, they went up in price of our audit. Three cents per document, but we're averaging between 2,000 and 2,500 documents a year. So that would be that change. And I did go up in, and that is because I've been taking classes as well through IMC, the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. That's for my PMC Certified Municipal Clerk Program. So that entails 60, 60 points in education and 50 points in experience categories. So they offer classes at our conferences twice a year and then an additional two-year when they do the certification classes for the Connecticut Town Clerk Certification. And those are the only changes for us this year.
Questions or comments? I think Marie's got one.
In your goals, what is the pay online system for land records?
So that's, that's something, something Jay and I had talked about. We had a meeting. I wanted to set up another meeting. So our land records right now are completely free online. We're supposed to be charging a dollar per page with COVID. When COVID hit, Joanne had all the land records online for, which, um, some other towns, if they didn't put them on there, I can't find one town that has land records online for free, especially since COVID, you know, buildings were starting to open back up. That's something that I wanted to look into getting our land records. They are online currently, but we're not charging for them. So that's revenue that we're losing every year. So that's something that I'd like to do.
I didn't realize that that was happening. Um, okay.
So the issue is whether or not we should be providing the service at, at no cost or at a cost to the user. Joanne used funds from the Town Clerk Fund when COVID first started, when she was still here. And she paid for the funding over a five-year period. So she, she paid for five years' worth of the subscription out of the Town Clerk Fund. And Amy and I have been going back and forth, and it's not a closed discussion yet about whether or not we ought to be charging for something we already paid for, or if it's a service that we can provide to the general public. She's got a contract proposal that, and the vendor came and did a, a presentation, but we haven't gotten to the point of bringing it to the Board of Selectmen yet.
Okay.
Al, I think you had a question?
Marie asked the exact same question I was going to ask, so it was perfect.
Okay. Amy, you're free to go. Town clerk. I think Ruth is frozen, so we're going to go to the registrars.
Good evening. Our budget is relatively boring. It reflects mostly what the same budget we had last year, but there are some changes in the area of supplies. We have to get our moderators' carts because the wheels have fallen off of one of them and the other one's not usable. We've priced those out at a little over $600 each. I think we can get them better. The other costs that we have that are not, we're not able to get from the selectmen's office are the U-voted posters and the stickers and the additional posters that the states require. So between the moderators' cases and just getting some routine stickers and whatnot, we're looking at a $500 increase. The other increases we have is a $750 increase versus a $200 increase in the education and dues. We have to go to two state Rovac conferences. One of them is in Danbury, the other one now is in Windsor, which is good. And we have to go to four regional Rovac conferences. And the reason I say we have to go to them is because that's where our CLEs are. And each register is responsible for getting eight CLEs each year. So we're going to be traveling more and the cost of those conferences are not cheap. They're about $325 and it goes through a two, two-day conference. The and the education and dues, again, we were talking about the Rovac conferences. The Karen is pretty much close to finishing her certification, which is mandatory. She has a year of the time she's appointed. Kovak gave us a little bit of breathing room. And I think she'll finish up this year. I think she has to finish up this year. Other than that, we're pretty flat on our projections.
Questions or comments? Marie?
Yeah, um, currently the Broadbrook Fire Department referendums fall in with other voting days. If that's going to be consistent, we don't have a problem. But if it's not going to be consistent and they have something that comes up that has to go to a meeting, has there been any consideration to budget for something like that since that's new entity for us?
No, we haven't specifically budgeted a line item for them. Frankly, this is the first I'm hearing of it. We have a little bit of fudge in the number of times we're going to have what we consider votings. We have budgeted for a primary this year. I don't think it'll happen, but we're also budgeting for an audit since East Windsor has not been chosen to be audited since I think I took office just four or five years ago. And other than that, you know, we have the three standard referendums and then the election. But no, to answer your question, Marie, we've not specifically budgeted for that item.
Okay.
So Marie, under the ordinance that established the Broadbrook, the Town of East Windsor Broadbrook Fire Department, two of those Broadbrook Fire Department referenda would fall on already established town budget referendum dates. One of them would spill into the ensuing fiscal year. So it's a first Tuesday or second Tuesday in May, second Tuesday in June, second Tuesday in July is how they, they ordinance reads.
Jason, does that mean that if the budget is passed the first time around, we're, we're still going to have a second referendum?
If, in the, in the, what I consider unlikely event, that the town budget passes on the first try, but the Broadbrook Fire Department budget doesn't pass on the first try, there would be a referendum four weeks after the first one, only on the Broadbrook Fire Department question.
Unfortunately, those costs are the same for us.
Yeah.
Is Karen on?
Yes.
Karen, did you want to add anything to the budget?
Well, the only thing I wanted to add was with the redistricting that we're going to be doing, Broadbrook District 2 is going to be picking up more of the 59th district, which means additional workers for, like when we, when we have a, a district election, District 1 has to have double workers. Right now, District 2 is all 57, but when District 2 becomes, picks up part of the 59th State District, they're going to have to pick up workers also. But right now, we haven't gotten into too much of redistricting.
Jason, is, has the redistricting been approved at the state level?
Yep.
Yeah, something just, something just came out.
For state assembly seats, it has been done. It's not finished yet for congressional districts, but we're not in, it's not anticipated that there will be changes in towns unless they're already split towns from a congressional seat perspective.
How about the state senate?
Done. We're still, we're still wholly within the third senate district, so there's no split district there.
So the state, the state district, the 57, 59, that's approved?
Yes.
Okay, so that means then that our District 2 voting district is going to be picking up some of District 1 voters in addition to the different lines for the Broadbrook Fire Department. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done with all these lines.
Yeah, so what, I, I don't think one, one district is, or one voting precinct is picking up voters from anybody else, but it does mean that, that both assembly seats are going to be split in both districts.
Correct.
Which just makes things harder for you guys.
Right. But I guess we'll just see how that goes.
Well, we got 10 years to perfect it.
If I lived that long.
Any other questions or comments for the registrars?
Is Rice Road moving to the 57th district?
I don't have the final maps yet, Marie.
Okay.
Or we don't have the final maps, not I, we.
The, the dividing line in, the dividing line in Broadbrook is Main Street. So if you're, if you're, if you're at Paul's Package Store, you're standing in the 59th. If you're at the Broadbrook Fire Department, you're standing in the 57th. That's how far the creek was. Margaret Drive is in the 59th now.
Right, right. It, it, it looked like it went all the way out 1, 140, even almost out to Margaret Drive.
Margaret Drive is now in Carroll's district. It's like the people who were making the maps didn't realize that there was no bridge on Melrose Road.
No. Right.
Wow, that's actually an interesting point. They, they have totally disenfranchised those voters. Angelo, I, I'm going to push back on your comment about there's not going to be a primary in the next, in the next year. I think there absolutely is. For, for congressional races and for certain constitutional races, I, I very much think there's going to be primaries. Maybe not for the two spots for governor, but down ballot for sure.
Well, we budgeted for one in each party.
Okay. Anything else for the registrars? Let's go back to Ruth, since I think she is unfrozen now. I'll tell you right off, there's going to be an echo and a lag. So Ruth has a litany of budgets that it's hers to defend. We'll start with her departmental budget, which is closer to the front in Tab 2.
Which one, Jason?
The Planning Department. The planning department.
Okay.
And then we'll go on to the boards and commissions that's underneath her. I'm seeing it now.
It's a 4153. It's towards the back of tab two.
Oh, there it goes. Thank you, Amy.
Yep.
Where Ruth go? Ruth, go ahead, unmute and take it away.
Right? Am I muted or not? You hear me?
You are not.
Okay, good. All right, so should I start off with, um, where my budget is increasing?
You can talk about, uh, you can talk about it however you see fit, um, where you're increasing, what you're working on, what your staffing level is, that kind of thing.
Okay. Uh, well, we are up where our staffing level, we have three full-time employees now. Um, and we are being supported one day a week by, uh, Mike D'Amato, who's the planning consultant for the department. So you can see that in the salary lines. We still have one part-time position that is open. And those numbers have been adjusted by appropriate procedures. The professional service line is the one that's gone up, um, the most and accounts for that, um, support from, are we going to, do we call that teach tyke? I forget how we pronounce his, his tyke.
I call it tai chi, but I think he calls it taiki.
Taiki, taiki. Uh, that's Mike D'Amato and his partner and staff, uh, provide professional services for us, um, to help push our initiatives, um, mainly economic development, customer service, the interface with folks, um, development of regulations to support, um, proper zoning to keep up with the state statutes and to help us, um, permitting process more streamlined for developers who wish to come to town. Um, the whole litany of items that Mike will be supporting us on that I've included, um, in the detail for that. That's, um, my biggest ask in this budget. The other thing that's gone up, um, across the board, the commissions is recording secretary fee. And I, Jason, I heard you mention that at a budget meeting you held earlier this week. Is that in a separate section?
Um, it's not in any section, but I flagged it as an issue across the board in the board would need to be aware of and consider.
Okay, well, I can give a little background on that if you like.
Please do.
Yep, I was asked by the Planning and Zoning Commission to take a look at what recording secretaries were being paid in, um, grounding in their towns. Um, and I reached out to, uh, counterparts in Cromwell, Weathersfield, Enfield, South Windsor, Ellington, in Windsor Locks, and I also took a value that I got from an online survey. And kind of crunch some numbers and normalize what folks were paying, um, for recording secretary services to see where East Windsor stood. And we were, uh, on, on the low side. Just, I don't know if folks have seen that information, but I got a, um,
They, they have not yet.
Okay, so the average, um, for a 10-hour effort, get a meet, to go to a meeting, take the minutes, prepare the motions and, and minutes packet, um, was $174 and we were paying $125. So we upped that, um, fee to 150 for a, a standard meeting. And a meeting less three hours, I would say, rather than say standard. And then anything over three hours, it went up, um, to 60. And, um, so that impacts that item on all the commissions as far as recording secretary services. And I did it as a percentage, like a certain number of meetings would be in that higher number of hours. And the rest would be in the standard rate. So that, that comes across on, but the agricultural and, and, um, Conservation Commission because they take their own minutes. And then, uh, dues and fees are up, I think mainly because we're re-staffing and both of those employees will need to go to training, um, for the zoning, the casio-training. And, uh, that's reflected in that number as well. There's, I've also provided, um, details on what the fee, the dues are for different, uh, professional organizations that we use within the department.
Any questions or comments for Ruth? Al?
All right, you go ahead.
I didn't see her, I'm sorry.
That's okay, thank you. Um, the tai chi at the $4,000 a month, is that the current rate we're paying in this fiscal year?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's also the rate that when they were still with CHA, that was the rate we were paying. Uh, that was their initial rate. They have not changed it ever.
Okay, thank you.
Al?
Yeah, so I don't have any, any questions. I just want to say, you know, over the last, what, three years or so, we've seen a lot of changes, a lot of turnover in this department and really encouraged with the direction that it's headed. Um, to me, it is the economic engine, um, that drives, you know, new businesses coming in here or existing businesses to, to expand. So it's very really important that we invest in it. So I'm, I'm, I just want to say I'm happy with the direction that's going in.
Took a long time, but we got the right people there now. Other comments for Ruth? Charlie?
Um, I, I don't know, maybe this question doesn't belong here, but how much overlap or, I don't even know what to call it, is there between what we're paying to motto and the actual, um, Economic Develop Commission itself?
So that is a difficult question to answer. Um, so I'll tell you this, a lot of the economic development initiatives that have happened over the last three years, um, have come out of my office and Ruth's office. And Mike has been a big part of that over the last year and a half. So is Ruth. A number of those things should have come out of EDC, but historically they haven't. You'd have to go back to when, um, Andy Hoppen was on there when they were actually doing something that was, forward-thinking enough to engage businesses in a meaningful way about future development. Um, they do a lot of talk about, um, cheerleading and boosting for existing businesses. Um, what Mike is able to bring to the table is, um, you know, the ability to facilitate meetings with nationally-based companies around development or get us into the queues for, um, competitive solicitations on a regional basis. Things that quite honestly, a volunteer commission does not have the bandwidth or the skillset or the time or the resources to do. Um, but, you know, we have, we check in most Thursdays, Ruth, Mike and I, and in the span of a week's time, he'll be able to set up conversations with the Connecticut Land Bank and developers and advanced CT for a week later. It's like a magic trick, honestly. Um, but it's highly efficient versus a volunteer board who come from different walks of life and don't have the connections to get that done.
I would just like to add that what I see, uh, like Tomato adding is, is the technical capabilities that are, you know, laying the groundwork. You know, like currently, if you look at their, their upcoming, uh, agenda for the planning, you know, they're talking about, you know, how do we implement the, the warehouse point study, you know? So economic development really from the standpoint of, of the planning department is laying the groundwork and putting the, the correct zoning regulations in place and the, and the correct processes in place that, that actually, you know, streamline the capabilities for, for companies to come in and, and give them and, and really make it inviting for them to come in, right? Uh, where the EDC, I, as, as Jason was referring to is, is, you know, they're, they're making connections, they're, you know, networking and that kind of stuff, but it's a different skillset and I think what we've been missing is the technical capability in the background, anticipating what is needed and making sure that our regulations and bylaws and everything match up to that.
I agree with that, particularly, you know, Mike is in five or six ti- towns at once. And he's been doing this a long, long time. His network is broad and, and as Jason was alluding to, he's, he's got, he's on a good, um, oh, relationship with many people that respond, you know?
Now that Ruth is finally up to full staff, um, well, almost full staff. Um, we, we just brought out an assistant planner this week who's going to have a heavy focus on the, the zoning enforcement stuff and, um, compliance issues. Um, that will be, that will now allow us to actually assign duties between Ruth and Mike and, or allow Ruth to assign duties between she and Mike and Danielle in such a way so that we'll have a lot of bases covered in that department while we're moving forward, not just trying to catch up, but while we're moving forward.
And Danielle comes with, um, a master's in urban planning and several years of experience. So it's really, she's just learning our regulations and, you know, she knows the right, right questions to ask and is eager to, um, get to work and she's already doing region working and, I'm glad to have her. Do you want to go through the commissions?
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
Okay, so the first, um, is planning and zoning. And in here, you'll see that recording secretary fee has gone up and I described below. I, I guess I misspoke. It's 175, um, for a regular meeting up to three hours. If the meeting goes over three hours, it would be 260 is charged for the meeting. And the way I calculated my ask for the budget was that, um, I'm estimating 25% of our meetings would be at that higher rate. And that's how I, I come to that, uh, 3710. The other fees and dues I've detailed out, um, per commissioner basis and membership fees and seminars that those commissioners, um, get a lot out of that Connecticut Bar Association and land use seminar. That's where that total came from there.
I'll just keep rolling.
Okay, I'll just keep going then. Uh, zoning board of appeals, the only change you see there is that increase for fees. And this is, you know, they're an on-call board really, so I base that on, um, six meetings and that all of them would be the longer. I'm going to do, uh, okay, I have economic development commission next. I'm not sure if that's next to yours. My sheets have got shuffled. The commission had, uh, asked me to request a budget of $10,000. Um, I don't know if folks had an opportunity to read the email that Jim Richards sent this morning.
Um, I have had an opportunity and I know the board all received it. If you wanted to read it, go right ahead.
I can read it. Okay, so, um, Jim says, "Good morning. Since I'm sending this email as I'm unable to attend this evening, but I did want to support the Economic Development Commission's budget request. This year, the EDC has asked for what many would consider a sizable increase from last year, but not in light of where they were just a few years ago. While I won't comment on the most recent asked operation of the EDC, I do know prior to it was an energetic source of positive growth and new and retention of business. Yes, we did have events which we paid for, but many times the business or entity would also sponsor the event for the betterment of the community at large. We also utilized our budget in behind-the-scenes reporting various economic opportunities that arose. Please note that the DC funding request is about one quarter is funding, requesting about one quarter is being utilized for recording secretary. If you need proof of what occurred in the past on this commission, I encourage you to take a few minutes to read what was going on in the minutes back three to 10 years ago. I know many of you are aware of what this commission has done and I'm certain that your economic team will and can achieve this year, especially if our funding request is approved. Thank you, Jimbo. During the meeting when they were, um, requesting uh, funding, some of the professional services that were discussed was, um, included grant, a granted visor or prefer mark studies and reading materials. And many of those things are, are the types of, um, efforts that we have going between, you know, from, from Mike D'Amato. He helps us with that too.
What, what training would they be taking?
And their bylaws, it says that they would need training. Uh, we had advanced CT provide them training, uh, last year. Uh, I think it's more to kind of level set where they are on economic development and the things that they should be based on, um, for bringing businesses to town and the catalyst, but specific training. We don't have that detailed.
Any other questions or comments on EDC? Charlie? Nope, okay. Ruth, what's next?
Okay, inland wetlands and watercourses. Uh, again, the higher rate for recording secretary. Um, and there's, is basically half of what EDC is because they meet monthly instead of twice monthly. They use the same logic of 25% at the higher rate. They use the same logic of 25% at the higher rate. And then the only other items there are the dues, fees and dues for the commission members. And then last but not least is the agricultural commission and conservation commission budgets. And those are staying at the, um, $500 level. They take their own minutes. They're, um, pretty low maintenance.
Anything for Ruth on anything she's presented? Okay. Ruth, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So let's, let's turn to tab two, I'm sorry, tab three, um, and look at the building department's budget. Um, obviously there is no building official to present this. Um, so I'll share. Well, actually, pardon my comparative. Um, I'll share what I'm recommending. Hmm, for a second. Um, so in terms of full-time salaries, and this is true in all departments, I'm, I'm just going to flag this for the time being. Um, and it'll come up a couple of times, but, um, there are a number of bargaining units that are either out of contract or are going to be out of contract, um, or that have some other consideration. So the clerical union is out of contract as of July 1, 21. So they're, they're almost, well, they're eight months out of contract now. So the, the budget proposals in any department for full-time employees don't include two years worth of raises for clerical employees. So that's something to, to just keep in mind and it's budgeted for someplace else, but in the department lines, it's absent. The, in the supervisor's contract, there is a, they're, they're locked in at a 1.75% increase with the opportunity for up to another 1% increase based on merit and performance. So what's budgeted in each of the department lines is only the 1.75% number. The additional 1% or up to 1% is also budgeted elsewhere, but it does not reflect in any of the full-time salary lines. Um, and then lastly, while we're talking about salaries, um, the police officers, you, uh, the police officer's contract expires on June 30th, 21. So in that department, in the police officer's line, the, the only thing budgeted is the new police officer and any step increases. There is no, collective bargaining increases included in that budget. So just flagging that as an across-the-board thing that the salary lines need to be taken, we, we need to take a look at the salary lines with the thought in mind that there are pieces missing from every single department. Um, although it's, it's budgeted elsewhere, it's not going to show in that line. So that said, um, the full-time salary, salary line in the building department only includes the 1.75% increase for the building official. It does not include an increase for the clerical employee. Now, as you all know, the building official is now vacant and it's unclear whether or not that position will be filled by the outset of the, the year. So that, that number is a highball number. Same thing holds true with the, the building clerk position, which we'll talk about later on this evening. Um, the part-time salary line represents a 2% increase. Um, herein also across the board is something to consider, and I mentioned the other night. Because of the increase in the minimum wage, uh, and the five-year phase in that the state is doing, there is salary compression that's happening there, um, between what we pay our part-time employees and what the minimum wage is rising to. Um, so it's not that much different for a summer camp counselor to be making the same thing as um, somebody who's working part-time in any of our municipal departments is making. I, I just want to make that clear because that's something we also should think about, um, addressing. There now, actually, we can take longevity out of this department line because now there will be no need for that in the new budget year. That's changed. Um, in the professional services line, historically, we have had $20,000 in there. We've only used, going back to FY 17, 18, $100, $6,000, $190 in successive years. So what I did is I took that 20,000 number and reduced it by $10,000 so that there still is something in case when a new building official is seated, you know, we need to bring in somebody to, to augment their work for whatever reason. We do have some means to do it, but the historical trend is that that money is budgeted in return. Um, supply line, the request was, uh, from Rand was $2,000. I budgeted 1,500. Um, and again, that had to do with historical trends over time. The only, the only year in which they even came close to spending 1,500 in, in department-specific supplies was also the year they were using an outside contractor to supplement the inspection services. Um, other than that, it's been nothing close to, almost nothing more than ha- half of what they've been budgeted. Um, and then dues and fees was set at $1,200 and I kept that the same. Obviously, there's some, uh, some changes that have happened here since budgets were submitted, even since, um, I submitted the budget. So I'll do the best I can with answering, answering any questions about the submission on that. Um, anything pertaining to personnel or hiring, we can talk about later during the selectance meeting.
So obviously, we're going to be talking about a part-time, so to speak, or not even, or contracting for building official services later on. So would that come out of professional services? It wouldn't come out of any of the salary lines, right?
Amy, where would you put that under you called? Are we pulling that out of professional services or salary?
It will be professional services because they are not our employees.
So at the 48 and some change at $12, I'm 12 hours a week. That's somewhere around 30 grand a year. So should we pump up that professional services to 30 or 35,000 and?
Right now, we have enough funding to cover the arrangement in the short term during the current budget year. And then we should take, um, we should take it with a grain of salt. What happens after that?
Okay.
I would not suggest changing the salary line at this point in time.
No, I was just talking about the professional services line.
Oh yeah. So, uh, you know, it has historically been 20,000. I reduced it down to 10,000. I would entertain, when we get into this part of the process on the third, that maybe we want to restore that. That, that might be because of changing circumstances, we might need to revisit that.
Well, that was my point is it really to cover the, what we'll be talking about later, to cover that professional service, it would need to be somewhere, that line would need to be like 30 or 35,000. So I mean, we could take it later, but I just want to bring that up.
So Alan, for this year, I would be doing a transfer to, to fund the money into the professional services line.
And, and, and that contract, as it reads now, is only until July, June 30, but I imagine it's a potentiality that we would continue that.
Any other questions or comments on that, uh, department budget? Okay. Let's go to the one everyone fears the most, the treasurer. Anybody want to mess with her?
Now, now, now. All right. Um, I, I think I only have very small increases in my budget also. Um, we were a little short in our fees for, um, our payroll services for last year. So I have budgeted a little bit of an increase there and we are already more than halfway spent. And probably only six months in for expenditures. So I did increase, um, a 5% increase just because every time we add new employees, including all the part-time firefighters, we pay more money because it costs us more to use the payroll service. The more people we have, the more W2s we have. So those items are, um, adjusted and let's see, I did a small increase in my supplies and a small increase in my dues and fees. And that's all my changes.
Anybody want to go at her? I dare you.
So Alan, do you want to talk about your question about the budget?
Yeah.
Okay, so Munis has capability to actually input detail into our budget lines, like what you see underneath right now in the Excel where in my dues and fees, I've spelled out all the different things that make that dues and fees number up. That has the ability to actually do that in Munis. And we have the new software that we just bought into for Clairegov. So we can have other places where we could have more transparency and more automation, um, going forward.
Yeah. So, all right. So that all makes sense, but you mentioned in Excel, Boris Leckman hasn't seen an Excel sheet like we normally do as of yet, right?
Um, we sent it, well, it got PDF to you today, I think from Alista for the expenditures. With the department had requests sitting side by side with Jase.
It was also what I submitted to the town clerk as part of my, my charter obligated budget submission. And that's because we still cannot get into Munis. So we had to do anything.
We can't start the 23 budget because they haven't closed their 21 year yet. They're having a little difficulty ending their audit.
Yeah, we.
Yes. And because we're all on one system, them not being done holds us up on our side. But I would have had to do the Excel anyhow because in a meeting, when we start our workshop and we want me to change this number or that number, I'm not going to have Munis there to update and have you guys look at it. It's going to be an Excel that you guys are making the changes or at least an Excel summary sheet that we're spelling out what changes we want to make. So it, we're going to use Excel anyhow, but it would be easier if I had Munis because then I could export it to Excel. It would all be in there and I wouldn't be keying it. In this case, I keyed it all.
I'll just, I think I can speak for the board of selectmen that we love the Excel sheet. No matter how you produce it, we love the Excel sheet.
Anything else for Amy?
So I don't know if you guys can see it, but this is what one of the emails looks like when you open the file. It's just a bunch of gibberish.
Did you open it not on your cell phone? Cause I, I opened it on a hard drive and it, or a laptop and it came out fine.
Okay, I'll try it, but.
It was sent as a CSV, so your phone doesn't know how to deal with that. It just, it opens it as a text file when it's coming in delivery, basically.
Oh, so I can resend it tomorrow as a, um, Excel. I'm sorry about that.
He'll, he'll be, if Charlie opens it on a, a laptop, it'll show right up. You know, it shows the right way on a laptop.
Yeah, if you have Excel or if you have a, a, you know, open sheets or any of that on your phone, it'll still open up, but your phone doesn't have that. So it's just, it sees it as a text file.
We were welcoming you to the matrix, Charlie.
Yeah, that's what it looks like.
All right, Amy, you want to do board of finance? Anything, then they'll just undo, so.
So board of finance, we have a increased price in our audit because we have to go out. This is our last year with, in our contract with Mahoney Sable. So I did a 5% increase. Um, and let's see, we did a reduction of the bank fees because we haven't need them the last few years, but they do need to be there in case we do have to pay them. And we increased the mail and we decreased the mailer because, um, we haven't spent that either. We've been spending about $700 to get the budget mailer out. The postage for that is actually in the postage line in Selectman's budget. And the annual report, we left at 2,000 because we're just about halfway there in most of the years, other, this year we were only 1,202 so far. So that's what I have for board of finance.
Okay. Uh, Selectman's budget.
Well, do you want to do insurance and pension before you get to Selectman's or you want to do those last?
I'm sorry, I didn't realize that was the, uh, while we're changing tabs. So let's stay, let's finish out tab one. Which is my stuff, and then we'll, we'll go to tab four. Five. All right. So what am I doing? Um, we adjusted postage um, because of the potential to carry cost for the five village voice. Um, so ad, ad support has not been there to the extent that, um, we had always hoped, although it seems to be getting a little bit better. Um, so in the event that we need to supplement the, the postage cost for that, we want to be able to keep that going for, um, so we had to increase the postage line. I reduced the advertising line by about $500 based on historical trends. Um, I increased the travel line by $200 to cover the cost of the conference. I increased central supplies by $1,000 and I offset that with a decrease in printer and toner by $1,000. So between that and 2% uh, increases for, uh, my staff and I, uh, that becomes a total increase of, uh, 700, $7,304 or just a little bit more than 2%. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I just had a quick question uh, under the community outreach line. I know part of that is for Everbridge and I know the PD is also paying for Everbridge. I just wanted to make sure we didn't list that twice or are they paying the chunk and we're paying a chunk?
So Everbridge is covered in the communications line of emergency management. Um, and that is, that actually, that $7,000 number has been reduced over time. Uh, it was 10,000, um, and it was kind of like a discretionary thing that, you know, Maynard would do, uh, townwide mailings on the charter revision stuff out of that. Um, I've used it for similar things, although I haven't used very much of it. I'm trying to look at the line to see what I've actually expended.
Um, we have spent, um, 700, no, um, let's see, $157 this year and 700 last year.
My first year, um, we expended $4,800 out of that and that was entirely before I got here. The second year, I spent about $800. In the current year, I'm up to about 160 right now. So it's, it's a cushion in case there are things that need to be done to, or that can be done to communicate with the, the general public or increase transparency or that kind of thing.
Yeah, I know, I got that. Uh, it's just that the PD is, is, they're budgeting 8746 for Everbridge. We're, you know, we're lumping in, in community outreach. Some of that is, you know, we're also paying for some Everbridge. I'm just kind of trying to figure out, what are we actually paying for Everbridge and who's paying it?
The, the listing, the listing on the summary sheet that I submitted should not include Everbridge. We, we do not pay Everbridge out of that budget line.
Okay, cool.
That 8,700 or whatever is the full price and it's in that one communications line. We decided it's a town-wide thing that it would be better off in communications and split between departments.
Okay. I was just a little confused. It looked like we were paying twice for it or something, but.
Yeah, I apologize for the error on the memo. That, that's entirely mine, but it is not paid for out of that line.
Thank you. Other than that, I'm good.
Anybody else? Okay, um, let's go to activities and fees and this is going to be a collection of inserts. I think I'm going to make a couple of highlights once I get to the sheet. Um, and then, um, then I'll ask if anybody has any questions about any of the supporting documentation. I'm not going to go through every single line. Um, I, I think it's easier if I just take your questions. So actually, So actually, you know, I can go through every single one. Um, so the probate court is per capita assessment. Um, that's a population-driven thing. That's east, the, the $2,853 is East Windsor's contribution to the regional probate court on that per capita assessment. North Central Health is our regional health district. Um, that also is a per capita assessment. Um, the reason that that number actually went down is because the, the DPH census count for the town of East Windsor was lower than it was last year or, or lower than it was expected to be. So the assessment rate didn't come down, just the number of people being assessed did. Um, we budgeted a thousand dollars for general recognition. Those are things like the, the different plaques that we do. Like for example, the firefighters or we have a couple coming up where we commemorate service and that kind of thing. Um, CCM is our membership into the, uh, Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, a regional research, a statewide research lobbying group on behalf of the town, actually 168 towns. CROG is our regional planning agency. That also, that also is population-driven. The Memorial Day line is for flags at the cemeteries on Memorial Day. Uh, the Metro Hartford Alliance is, um, it's a regional, basically think of it like a regional chamber of commerce and clearinghouse for certain, um, business interests. It houses things like hype. There, there's, there's five different agencies that are underneath the Metro Hartford Alliance, but it's a, a regional business networking membership. The Cemetery Association, they're asking for, we, we're funding them this year 20,000. They're asking for 45,000. In my recommendation, I reduced that back a bit. Um, East Windsor Health and Wellness, that, Amy, that used to be the Visiting Nurses Association, right? Yeah, um, so uh, Four Town Fair. We budgeted 5,000 for them last year when we were the host community. In their beg letter this year, they didn't really specify a dollar amount, so we kept it at that 5,000 number. Although historically, when we are not the host community, that 5,000 number is a 1,000 number. Um, but I kept it in there at five because we weren't really sure what they were asking for. The Network Against Domestic Abuse, uh, that is just a, a basically a donation made on behalf of the town, that, that the network services, I think eight communities, um, and his, over time, we've inched that up from about 2,500 per year up to the current 5,000 per year. American Heritage River, uh, we, we pay for them. I think that's a recording secretary and water testing. Melrose School is for flags. Is that also flags at the cemetery? Amy?
I have no idea. We just give them the $500 and they do what they do.
And, um, Connecticut Main Street was something that I tried and I, I didn't think we got the value out of it that I was hoping for. The thought there was that we would be able to, to drive some sort of economic development towards downtown redevelopment. Um, they are a, a nonprofit that, um, I don't think provided the service that we were looking for. I don't think that that was actually the type of service that they provide, so I'm asking it from the budget. Questions or comments on activities and fees? Okay. Um, legal. The legal budget I'm keeping flat. There's no, no change there from current year. I'm trying to find it now.
It's right before your activities and fees.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, um, no change. Um, that's a flat budget. And then the, the Ethics Commission is just asking for, uh, recording secretary fees, although thankfully they haven't had much to do in a long time. If there's no questions on those things, we'll move on to tab five.
Nope, I need to do one more in, um, tab one or tab two, the property insurance.
Oh.
It's after the, all the planning stuff. It's, uh, 1054157 and it's both the, uh, property insurance and a deductible expense account.
Yep.
And we have a not to exceed 3% increase, um, which they've said is nothing but exposure changes. So I have increased it $5,000 and left the deductible at the 5,000, as you'll see um, on that spreadsheet that got sent today. There is, um, most years we have used, um, some share of the deductible, which is, um, $500 or up to 1,000 for, um, like car accidents and stuff. And 5,000 for directors and officers' claims or, um, the crime stuff. So we have deductibles different depending on what policy it relates to.
Before we leave the tab, I, I noticed, uh, Mrs. Sherman has logged on. I wonder if she wanted to give us kind of an overview of the AHRC um, and what their, um, their budget ask is. I tried to cover it, but I just breezed over it.
Yes, um, we've kept our numbers at 3,500 for the last couple of years and make do with that. Um, there's secretary minutes of $1,200 and then we pay for, um, the water testing, which runs approximately $1,800. Last two years it's been a little less because, um, with COVID, um, there wasn't in-class studies. So some of the money that Dr. Martin would have used for some of her testing was left over from her school budget and she applied it to our river testing. Because once you buy the reagents, they have a shelf life, so they would have been thrown out if she didn't use them for our purpose. Um, but this year everything's back to quote normal and so it'll be around $1,800 with what's left. We, um, have two subscriptions that we usually do to River Conservancy and, uh, Connecticut River Alliance. And then, um, what's left, we buy new guides if we have to or whatever. Um, that's about it.
Questions for, for Mrs. Sherman?
Well, but thank you. Everything, the trail is looking great. You guys do a great job.
Thank you. We had, we had a good crowd for, um, First Day Hike and, um, we've just finished our meeting and we're, um, planning to do, um, some more bridge and mudwalk repairs. We did not get the maintenance grant that we applied for. The list came out yesterday and we were not on it sadly, so, um, we'll just keep going ahead with things the way they are.
So as far as the trail extension that, that you guys, uh, kind of mapped out and I've kind of, I've walked it a couple times. You know, there's obviously some little bit of new bridges that need to be done there. Um, so that maintenance grant probably would have covered the materials for that, right?
That was our hope.
Yeah, so that, um, so I guess that's going to be a holdup.
Yeah, well, we'll do what we can. We do our little fundraising and whatever we net, it goes to buying wood.
Do you have a basic idea of what the material cost would be for the expansion?
Um, we had asked for, um, a little bit more than $5,000. Um, but that would have included putting some amenities in like, like park benches and that sort of thing. If we just needed wood, probably about 3,000.
For wood went up 20% this month.
Um, it's been going up and up since COVID started. And, you know, now everything is transportation and the cost of, um, fuel has gone up, so it gets tacked on to whatever you buy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mrs. Sherman.
Sure enough.
Amy, are we now on to benefits?
Yes.
All right, that's tab.
Abby.
Okay. All right, so in the 27th payroll, um, this, this is again, that budget line that moves based on where we are in the calendar. Um, Amy and I were talking today and we're at the, we're, we are at the tail end of the 27th payroll. We think we're on, um, nine out of 10 days. Um, so there would be, am I right, Amy?
Yes.
Yeah, so there'll be one more year where this goes up and then there's going to be a pretty steep drop, um, and then it'll start rebuilding over time. FICA, um, the, uh, the costs there are driven by, um, number of employees and, uh, compensation rates. That just is part of their compensation, so, um, that is what it is. We don't have a final number yet on the DB pension number. Um, that number may still come down. So just, we're just flagging that. Um, the 401A and 457 match, um, that is for employees that are on a defined contribution pension plan. Um, or that have a 457 match as part of their, uh, collective bargaining agreement. Um, OPEB is other post-employment benefits, that's flat. Uh, tuition reimbursement is flat, employee, uh, unemployment compensation is flat. Workers' comp, uh, is going up by about $4,600. That's due to, uh, our exposure risk. Um, and, uh, that's, that's administered through Karma. Our health and life insurance number, uh, we budgeted the 5% increase that we were told at the initial conversation. We, we would expect as probably a high ball. Um, they have since backtracked a little bit and said that may not be the high ball and maybe as high as eight. It may be as low as zero. Um, so both Patrick and I have stuck with that 5% number because we don't have anything else to go on. They're saying that we may not even have a better number until, um, sometime in May. So Amy and her staff are working on a census of employees to determine who takes, um, municipal health insurance now and what the, whether or not we can absorb the 8% within the current number or would have to adjust that. And then anything that happens after the, the fact would be, um, just kind of additional savings that become available. Um, we, this is our third year on this plan. So after this, the, uh, 8% cap may expire and, and they'll, they'll go on the open market and let us know what, you know, if we want to lock in again, what that would be, but, um, this has been a tremendous savings to the town. Um, by locking in with the state plan versus the HSA that we were on. They, the HSA, you know, they'd start off at a 20-something percent rate increase and they settle down to 12 and, and you know, pat everybody on the back about what a great savings that was. Whereas we have not had an increase here, um, of even 5% in the first two years. Um, so it's been a very good change. So, uh, you know, it is what it is. Any questions on the benefits piece? Marie?
Yeah, under the other post-employment benefits. Is that, that amount, is that in line with where we should be based upon the statute that was passed several years ago? That by a certain date, we had to be fully funded?
Yes, we are, um, only a chunk of this is actually going towards the actuarial determined contribution that we need to make. The rest of it is used to pay, um, benefits when people leave that have accrued time.
Okay, and what physicals are we paying for now that we don't have the fire department or are we still paying for the fire department?
Uh, no, those are pre-employment for our employees. When we hire somebody.
Okay. In heart and hypertension, are we paying out to anyone now?
Yes, we have one active claim and one tentative claim. And, um, if not, we send it over to another fund at the end of the year. Um, that's accumulating for future payments that might be necessary.
So one active and one potential.
Yes.
So Marie, just to give you some clarity on the OPEB thing. Um, in, and I'm going to go in successive years from FY17 to current. Um, but we paid 90,000, 28,000, 35,000, 119,000. Year-to-date so far, we're at 19,000. Um, and so we're budgeting 85, which is consistent with the current year.
Okay.
We, we, full disclosure, we do have some exposure for, um, pretty expensive payouts from employees when they leave. In the, in the next fiscal year, FY23. I don't know, Amy, I'm not sure if you can run the numbers on those yet, or if that's too soon.
I do not have numbers yet.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on, on employee benefits?
Nope.
All right, um, so it's seven o'clock, so I'm going to stop this, start the next recording, um, and then we'll, um, uh, we'll pick right up here so we don't keep Amy forever. Oh wait, you're home. Uh, can I have a motion to adjourn the, uh, Board of Selectmen Budget Workshop?
Class. Go ahead, Marie.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, um, the budget workshop.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All members are voting in the affirmative. We're adjourned at 6:59.